The meeting in order, it's a regular session, October tenth, two thousand twenty-two, and we're gonna call for a moment of silent prayer. All right, first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. And we got an addition, and it's, I put it under old businesses bill from the usual Houston about road department. Of route, irrigation five out there. And uh, but if there's anything else needs added to the agenda. Not a need motion to approve it.
I second.
All in favor? Motion's carried, approval of the minutes. Any questions on that? It looked like everything was in order. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make it.
I second.
All in favor?
I'm not gonna vote on that one here.
I wasn't here either.
All right, I'll, I'll vote in favor of it, cause it's, I think it's correct. But anyway, that motion, motion carried, the financials, accounts payable. Questions on that? Need a motion to approve, and everything looked like it's all right. Second, all in favor? Motion's carried, financial report. Any questions on that one? Need a motion to approve.
I agree.
Second.
All in favor? Our motion's carried, on appearance, we've got Sean Watson, Super B Express, uh, county property purchase. You wanna come up here and talk to us?
Yes, sir. My name's Sean Watson, thank you for your time, uh, we would be interested in purchasing the department of Ag, that little area right there. If you wanna put diesel lanes in it, uh, we're doing a full remodel at this time. But that would be for like a year and a half until we could put a travel center, something that lines with, not only a travel center, but a franchise, fast food, like a Godfather, just something of that nature. We just want to present it to y'all and see if it's up for consideration, settle that property.
Or?
You talking about the whole Ag center over there?
You talking about the whole, all the way through?
The building and everything.
Building and everything, we just, basically, we're gonna knock it down. We thought about even incorporating it with the park behind it, like putting a real nice park in line, maybe a dog park, something that when we're coming into town, it's the first thing.
So you gonna buy the other place right there, the federal state building, y'all already made a deal on that?
Well, it's all.
Contingent on everything.
Yeah.
I got you, I got you.
But, real aggressive, wanna make something real nice, something the city, county can be proud of.
You got any like plans you could show us?
No, I was called last week.
Okay.
Said, you didn't hear, and I told him I didn't have any kind of architecture or anything like that, but we could expedite that real quick. But immediately, acquiring the building next door gives us access to where we can have a rear exit of the store. Angle parking lots coming in, cause I mean, there's really no place in town where you can get in and out. Easy, so if we could get this all to the right of us, we have access coming in, we could put diesel lanes where that next building beside of us is. And then just roll it on the ground, parking for about a year and a half, cause we're three, we're putting completely bathrooms in the back of the store where the subway used to be. All of that is going to be nothing but restaurants in the back. Where the, to the left of where the coolers is when you open the door, that entire wall is gonna be knocked down to where the store is more open, new floors, we're redoing the entire kitchen. But if we could acquire that, it'd give us about a year and a half, it takes about ten, eleven months just to get the tanks, diesel tanks, to put it in ground. So architectural, the plans, everything else, it'd give us about a year and a half, just over two years. So we could from this, get every, all the ground level work done and put something real nice sometime.
All right, well, whether we do it or not, we got to find another place, that's the county agent's office and all that right there, we gonna have to find another piece of property. And see by the building and all, so we, we got to have some time also, how, how quick?
Well, the, that can all be worked out, I mean, because if y'all are having to do something on your side, this first building right beside of us, we could knock it down and that would fix our park. Possibly even put, go ahead and architecturally justify, putting the diesel lanes in with the foretold knowledge that we're going to put a travel center behind it, where it just complements what we do and not have to backtrack. And then when we get to that point, it will be pretty close to y'all, in that year and a half, two years time.
Okay.
Can you give us a month? Can you, you give us a month, if you, go ahead.
You want us to contact you again, or you wanna come back to the next meeting?
Whatever.
I think if you could, if you could get us up maybe like a prelim, preliminary drawing, or kind of what you want, maybe, you wanna go ahead and talk about office.
I have an idea, but what y'all willing to pay?
Right, I think, I think that'd be it, and then we can kind of start moving.
We had to look about, because probably, we, I don't know that there's another building that we could acquire, there might be, just to make a, a move.
Right.
We'd have to see about that right there, if we got the build on scratch, that's, we're gonna have to work that all out.
But give us a month, I mean, anything that you could get us in that time, we can be talking and looking.
Happy to.
All right, okay, appreciate it. All right, the next on the appearance, we got Keith Bowen, Keith, you wanna update us on?
Yes, sir, just like, and once again, thank y'all for allowing me to speak to y'all as y'all have in the past, uh, I'm coming and talking about the election integrity like we have several times before. Uh, in the past, we've all understood that the QR codes that are on the ballots now, when you vote in person, are unconstitutional. It was ruled that way by US District Judge Amy Todenverden, we already know those are unconstitutional. You hear nothing to build people's confidence up in our election system, this, this is constantly a, a drumbeat of negative stuff out there. And now the things that I'm coming to y'all about is trying to help build up confidence once again in our election system. I'm not asking us to do anything that we're not already doing, uh, I don't know how many y'all hear when, when you, when y'all, we had the Zoom meeting with, uh, uh, the voter GA. And his recommendation is to use, uh, the absentee ballots, we already using now, those already are approved, you already have scanners for it, you already have everything, and it, and it doesn't matter one iota if you're a Republican, a Democrat, an independent. It, it don't matter, I just want people's votes counted the way they intend them to be counted, the way they intend to cast them. And right now, what, what we have, if there's a recount, it recounts a QR code, and we don't know what it is. When you cover in a circle, I graduated from Summerton County High School, and I can see a circle colored in, I can figure out what that means. And that's why, when everybody can see that and have confidence in it, we can build from that, I, I know y'all probably saw the news where that, uh, conic company got caught storing information in China, especially keeping poll workers' information. Some counties in, in Georgia use that company for the poll worker stuff, I checked with Judge Josh, and our county does not. So none of our poll workers' information is somewhere where it shouldn't be, but it's just a constant drumbeat of nothing but negative stuff about our election process. I'm not talking about the, the candidates, and I'm not talking about who to vote, I'm talking about the actual process of casting the ballot. And that's where I'm coming before y'all to ask if, if we can just, and I found out through all this, and like we talked before, that the county commissioners in our county, since we don't have a board of elections, the county commissioners have the right to change stuff up. And I'm just coming for y'all to not to ask if we can vote to use absentee ballots on day of voting here in the county of Georgia, to start the process of building up confidence in our elections once again.
You talking about this election coming up?
I would prefer that.
Keith, I, I, I'm getting mixed signals with this right here, I mean, some, some of them saying that this, all this stuff's got to go before the legislature, cause they already got a process in place. And I'm not, I don't know, you know, whether we could actually do that or not, I mean, that's, that's what I'm finding out. The legislature's already got an election process in place and guidelines about who uses absentee ballots, and I ain't got no problem with, with working with that right there, but I don't, I don't know whether we could do that right now or not.
I can understand your concern, but, you know, I brought y'all the information in the past, that where there's a question of legality or impracticality, then the commission, since we don't have an election board, it falls on y'all's shoulders. There's election board, they would be the ones that have to do it, but since we don't, and I know we're in the process of, kinda sorta gonna get one sometime in the future, but that, that's why I'm of the, of the belief that we should just go ahead and do something. Cause if we wait for the perfect time, uh, latent's done enough farming, ain't never a perfect time, you somebody's just gotta do something. And you'll find out later if it was right or wrong, but sometimes you gotta do something. And, and I don't want anybody to do anything, if this was against our state constitution, I would not be asking y'all to do anything, this would be, that would be wrong of me to do that.
I'm on, we're gonna get the county attorney to get his opinion, i- if, if we're gonna do this, I don't know whether we got time before the election to do it. If, if we do, we'd have to call a special meeting, devote this in, and I don't know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just telling you, I, I don't know whether we do it or not.
And I, I've been waiting on some information from up the state also, and that's why I'm so late coming down here, you know?
But I mean, have you, uh. What you, what, uh, what we got here, I mean, I mean, I ain't got, have, have you got something you can pass on to us, to, to hand it off to you that we could review?
I don't have anything except what I've already gotten you before, and I've, it's saved on the computer in the house, I don't have any with me here tonight.
Okay.
Is any other counties, say the Georgia unit?
There's forty-two or forty-three different counties that have been approached about using absentee ballots.
Well, that may actually agree to do.
This was like six weeks ago, the last time I heard of it, Mr. Garland was what I've been talking to, the, from the voter GA, uh, there's see forty-two counties. Most of them have a board of, of elections, a few of them have, have counties, and folks, it's just like anything else, it's gonna take one county to do it first.
Well, I ain't, I ain't got no problem with that, but the fellow you talking about, is, does he work with the state, or is he just an independent?
Independent, uh, he's a, I think the fancy word is nonpartisan, he's not a Republican or Democrat, he's just for voter rights in Georgia, uh, to have the election done the right way.
We'll talk to Josh tomorrow, dude's gonna contact the county attorney to see if this is even doable. And I don't know, being the timeframe that it's in right now. I don't know where the, the absentee ballots, the process may be done much far, or all that's done been loaded in to be printed out, I don't know.
And I'll be glad to set up another meeting between y'all and Mr. Garland, if y'all were, and the county attorney, if you need to get, cause I can tell you a little bit of stuff about peanuts and cotton, but about in-depth voting things. I would prefer someone with the information that could, could answer questions out there, it's like Mr. Garland said, that we ain't gotta figure out a new process, you already got the absentee ballot process works. And there's no use to reinventing the wheel, when you already got, you already, we already got the readers, uh, you've got ballots and got everything that you could use, so there's no use of trying to rebuild something, so. And once again, I, I'm not here trying to cause y'all any problems, or me any problems, or the county any problems. I just want people, when they come and cast their vote, they can look and make it done, and say, I voted for this one, this one, that, that's exactly what I intended, they can go and put it in the scanner. And if some question comes up, anybody that's counting ballots can look and say, yeah, that circle's colored in, the way it is now, what you read on that ballot does not make a hell of a thing, that QR code is the only thing that that scanner reads. And we can't, none of us in here, we can't get it out on our phone to read it, it's impossible, no one except a Dominion machine can read it. And that's what makes it unconstitutional and illegal in our state, because that is in our constitution, that when you cast your ballot, you have to be able to read what you have cast. And if they don't, if they're not reading those things printed out, they're just reading a QR code, if they count them a thousand times, how do we know they're counting right? I just need confidence built back, our, our country was founded on our free and fair elections, and our country is gonna keep going downhill if we can't have confidence that what we voted for is what was counted. And that, that's what I'm getting back to, that's why I say it doesn't matter to me, we just wait, anybody votes, you might vote the right way considering to me, or the wrong way, cause you're beginning, I want them to count the way they intend the votes to be counted. And us to be able to go back and look and see, you said there's twelve hundred votes here, and we'll count them back a month, or a year, or two years, and still be twelve hundred votes, that's, that's all I'm asking. And we can do that with absentee ballots, with these Dominion machines, it is one hundred percent, I, I don't say anything's a hundred percent, it's the Bible, but this year is a hundred, you, you, you can never count them and know exactly what the person casted and intended, because we can't read the QR codes.
All right, let us talk with Josh, talk to county attorney, if we can answer from them tomorrow, we'll get back to you. Do, I mean, you, you, your intentions are, is to have this in this next November election?
That's what I would love, I mean, and if it's possible, if we already have, I don't know enough about the process, but it'd be dangerous, but if we have enough absentee ballots already, can get them printed up, we've already got the readers.
Yeah, but is the public, I mean, how they gonna, are they gonna want one mailed out to them, or they, when they get the votes?
Using absentee ballots in the day of, in place of the machines.
Well. I don't know what of the, how they received that, I mean, I don't, I don't know, they've been used to using the machine, I don't, I just don't know. But anyway, we, we worked over.
Devil's advocate, if a bunch of folks didn't have the machines, they could not either, it took some training for all of us people that voted on, you know? In a, in a, in a perfect world, that would be great, but we, you see every day how things are hacked, all this kind of stuff, and we don't know what all went on, but I do know that when you cover in a circle, I took standardized tests in my esteemed college career of one year. You take a standardized test, and answer, and if you have a question, you go back and look, and you can see which one was colored, and that's all I'm asking, I, you know, sometimes, I know I make things a lot tougher than it's gotta be. And this appears to be one of the times with our voting system, uh, technology's great, but when it don't work the way it was intended, it ain't, it ain't that good. And we've all, we've all been caught with a computer that crashed, or something that don't work like you want it to. Let's, let's get it where it's simple enough where we can all understand, and I, I said, listen, I quit, I, I took up, not y'all's time, but I remember back when we fought overseas, and then people in those countries that we were able to liberate. They went and voted and stuck their thumb in an inkwell, and they come out holding that thumb, and they were so happy to prove they had voted. The simplest thing that's ever been there, you stick your thumb in an inkwell to prove that you went and you voted, and I've got proof. That's all I'm asking here, we can go, we can vote, we can color in the bubbles, we can cast our votes, and we know when we went back to the house, that I voted, and I voted the way I wanted to, and that's all. And if, and if the person we voted for don't win, we have confidence in knowing that, well, I need to pick a better candidate next time, because I know what I intend to do work, work right, and that's all I'm asking. Thank y'all so much.
Appreciate it. All right, next thing we got on the appearance is Ronnie Sheffield, road issue, Ronnie, you wanna come up here and talk to us?
Oh, both like they've been speaking thirty years, and I'm sure lots of milk, but I've got everything I'm gonna say. But I'm, I'm gonna talk to y'all about Sheffield Road, that goes through my property, I got about a three hundred fifty acres of it goes right through, and it's kinda agglomating. And I would like to get it abandoned, and take some of the heat off the county, cause if it belonged to me, the county wouldn't get sued for whatever happened down there, it'd be me, and I'd be in jail. And I think we can make it a safer place, we're gonna do away with the gates and get some signs about the size of them, and some doors, and put on E.T.N., explaining that it's a private road, and if, if you go through and do something wrong, and have an accident or something, you're liable not being knocked in the middle of county. And, uh, that's what we're gonna do, we ain't gonna get rid of the road, cause we need it worse than anybody. Don't miss anything?
No, um, it's, I mean, explained to everybody about the gates, and how the thing.
Yeah, well, the gate, we've had gates out there for about fifteen years, I don't know how long the system's been on the road, but most got, or they just ignore the gates, zoom right on in, and they don't reach, they don't ask nothing, just come. And we got to slow them down, stop them.
So they go, they're going around the gates?
Yeah, they got, got a road made around, of course, we do too sometimes, but we got to, you know, we're farming or tides, I think.
But what, tell us about the irrigation, what's, what's the layout with the irrigation, and, and why the road needs closing?
We put in the irrigation, and the system was too long, it was, had to go across the road about three hours or two, I don't know, and it's worked real good so far. And then I got two systems on the other side of the road, and they overlap out there and all that, but, uh, so far it hasn't been a real problem, but I'm, I'm getting worried about these people just ignoring everything and zipping in and out.
So at times the system is across the dirt road?
Huh?
At times, the system is across the dirt road.
Two or three towers, I can get now.
So if somebody would come through there, they could run in?
That's the whole thing, if it wasn't, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be here.
Right.
But, uh, and sometimes the systems almost hit each other, but I wouldn't get sued for that, I'd get pocketfuls of food. But anyhow, I think we can make it a, a lot safer and smoother, and I'm willing to do it, you know? But right now, if something happened in middle counties, they, they're the ones that get sued, of course, they sue everybody that's involved, me and Ty, the folks that work for Ty.
Well, it is Steely County, is that correct?
Do what?
Is it Steely County?
Yes, right now, middle county, and that's what I was talking about, they would be, if something happened out there, they would get a big load of this lawsuit, and, of course, they'd sue everybody, they could, you know that. But anyway, I'd like to make a little more sense than did, but I ain't got, do you think anything else?
Do y'all understand what he's talking about?
But I, I've seen these things done before, and to me, a big sign comes up that you can't miss, you know? They claim they didn't walk the road, it's what they, because we ain't got real gates, we just got, uh, bars across roads, they, they work, we had to drive around. And we'll work on it, if, if we get, uh, the road abandoned, there's a lot more stuff we probably need to do, but I'll read into it. Thank y'all for your time.
You got any more, you got any questions on him, about what, what he's proposing, what he wants to do?
I do wanna ask something, because I do know that Mr. Earl, I think, had had some concerns about that, so I was just gonna see what, you know, what Mr. Earl's concerns were, so everybody could hear it at the same time. Mr. Earl, what are your concerns with it?
That road, he's speaking about, he knew about the irrigation before he put it on there, that road has been like that for fifty years, before I even built my home. It's been a long wind, but I'm speaking on it, and it rip.
Sorry, Stevie.
But when I built my house, I built it on a county road, where it would be maintained, and now all of a sudden, he's greedy for land, he's taking his irrigation, walk across the county road. And I do not want that road closed, or I mean, because once it's abandoned, never get it back, and when it flows due to heavy rain, I hate to go out that way, me and my wife. And when it flows due to heavy rain, I hate to go out that way, me and my wife.
Let me add something to that. When it rains and that road is underwater, between your house and the Bellevue Road, it's underwater on both ends of the other road. I come over there in the middle of the night, one night, I'll be under, took y'all home. And if it had been an alternate route in there, y'all would've took it.
It don't matter. I still don't wanna live on a dead end road. And that road was a permanent road ever since I've been a boy. And I do still go out that way. UPS trucks goes that way. All the delivery trucks goes that way. And it's not gonna benefit nobody but Mr. Sheffield. And he knew before he put the irrigations out there. I have already spoken to my attorney and all that from the past. And he said, one person in jail, he was. Leave.
Nah.
Yeah.
One of our emergency personnel, they can't come in through the cell.
They can't come in the other way?
Yes, they can't.
The road, when I took him home that night, he was.
I think that was a ten inch right, right in the middle.
You know, Matt, you can't you can't go out either way. I I ain't had nothing to do with that.
I asked Earl, did he think I did it? He said it would be all right.
Huh?
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
Nobody did, you got a lot.
But then we ain't we ain't gonna fuss.
No.
We we we.
I'm saying something I said.
What? Alright, we here to gather the facts now. That's that's what we wanna hear. We wanna hear your side, but there ain't gonna be no fussing.
I ain't fussing, I'm just speaking out of my rights. I know what my attorney told me. And once the roads close, he's gone. Mr. Sheffield will be gathering three more acres of land. And I I I I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
Go ahead.
I already talked to him. This is old news to me. Mr. Allen Morrissey knows, because he was on the board that day. And all. And I'm sick of it too.
Well, how's he gathering three more acres of land when they gave the land for the road?
We had that road, go out there and measure forty feet down it.
His his family gave the road to start off with.
I can't hear that. It was a county public road. Mr. Ross Gilsherfield stole me that land.
He's not gaining, he gave the road property to his family.
I still don't wanna live on a little man. I don't want it to be maintained.
We diverted the road. If we diverted the road. We're not talking about that. We're talking about going, we're talking about going around it for your.
I didn't wanna go around the way it lasts two more miles. No, I do not want the road back.
The road is a hazard. That's that's what we here to address. I wasn't monitoring that situation out there. I was on the board. I didn't give him permission to do that.
I didn't mind getting permission, but you was on the board of, uh, commission.
Well, I had him stopped.
Yeah, I had him stopped.
Everybody else has been stopped.
They put the gates up there to stop the folks from traveling the road because it was a hazard. All that happened the four years I was out of here.
County, they told what, Yanks was told to upload a lot.
No, the county told you, you was gonna be responsible, somebody break. That's why they told you. I was there to make my attorney. And let's tell the facts if we're gonna talk.
The four years I was out of here, that's when all that took place.
Well, I can't hear that. I know what I know.
I know we've been here before. And at that time, the law was, don't take one objection. So it could all be closed.
That's exactly what my attorney told me.
Unless the law will change, then I'm not aware.
It ain't changed.
We're gonna consult with the county attorney about it. And if it's if it's uh, if it don't have to be a unanimous vote on this board, and what you're saying, we're gonna we're gonna check that too. But uh, we're gonna take a vote on it next month, yes or no. And we're here to gather the facts tonight. Now, is there anything else about this that hadn't been talked about that we need to know?
Any of those about that situation out there? I ain't been out there several times. I'm not in, there you go. I ain't put nobody on the spot. I'm telling y'all, don't do that to my road.
Earl, it ain't your road.
It ain't Ronnie's road either. It's the county road.
Well, there's been other roads that have been closed and ain't, you don't have a house on the road now.
I can finish. But Jerry got somebody in his rental house now. It's fine being, well, it's cause it's your cousin.
Yeah.
And you've been a man and came to me to stalk me, it might have been different, but you never done that, Johnny. And you know it. You like jammed it down my throat.
Earl, Earl, don't, don't don't talk like that. Now, we're here to gather the facts.
Facts, that's facts.
Uh, you you got anything else you wanna add to it now?
I'm gonna say I'm gonna sue the county and I'm gonna sue the county commissioner, perfect. One by one, if y'all do.
Well, if it ain't something life threatening, I I don't see no.
What we doing on? Ain't nobody, ain't nobody bothering us.
Put it like this, if somebody gets, goes down that road.
Mr. Sheffield needs to shorten his irrigation. That irrigation means a lot to him. That road means that much to me.
Are they gonna sue you if somebody gets hurt down there?
Are they gonna sue you?
Ain't gonna be no county commissioner after December.
That's right, and I'm proud of it.
Well, thank you very much.
Black weapon, you can burn him aside.
Earl, you ain't, don't start. I ain't here to fuss. You ain't cooperated.
No, that ain't, man, don't say that.
Listen, I went.
Don't want your finger to stop.
I went out of the way, take you home in the middle of the night down yonder.
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah.
And if I had some personal grudge, I wouldn't have went over there to get y'all.
What you put the word at? I don't do nothing for Earl Cox out there until I approve.
Who said that? Who told you that? Who 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 said that?
That's what you be going around with that.
Who said that? I I I ain't been no ill feelings, y'all. I picked up, listen, let me tell you something. I I'm calm. Let me tell you something. I went in the middle of the night and picked you up. There's no personal grudge here.
Yeah, there are.
I picked you up and I picked Martha. And if I had a better personal grudge, I actually picked Martha and her alien brother over there on Highway two fifty-three. And she was totally young and walking. And if I had had some personal grudge, I'd have went, turned the corner, went right on.
You gotta tell us something else, son.
Martha, I took you down to Tommy Watson's one day. One morning. You and you and your brother and you had a young'un on your hip. Your car was broke down at the end of the Babcock Road in two fifty-three. And I took y'all down yonder to Tommy Watson's.
You ain't never picked my wife up. I'm probably, no, you ain't, I ain't say that.
Well, haven't you the pipe, Glenn? I've got a lot of friends.
Yeah, why the damn? Why my mother didn't sell?
Which pipes you don't?
My dirt road is six months and I think three years.
I ain't had nothing to do with the pipe. The pipes would've put it, was put off there for whatever. Andy, you know anything about the pipes?
I don't know if you picked up the pipes or put them down.
We decided, the board decided not to put them in, and we moved.
Who decided not to put them in?
The board did.
That's all right. There you go.
Board voted them.
Was the pipes there when I was county commissioner?
I don't remember. I don't I don't remember who was county commissioner at that time. But we laid the pipes there and we going, redo that spot. And we decided not to do it, move somewhere else.
I didn't tell them to move the pipes. But there's a lot, I'm gonna tell you something. There's a lot of stuff been started around here for the wrong reasons.
Yeah, well, all I done was I tend to my little business, I come up here to the road. Even his cousins come in there a few minutes stealing the lane. And all that. I ain't even hear all that mess, man. I wasn't born with silver spoon in my mouth like some of us.
Oh, really? Don't start that right there because I tell you something right now. I had to work out the land out yonder. When I was a young'un, when my daddy had it on, and I've had to work it all out again and buy it all back for my family. You wave over if you want to.
Okay, can I just say this? People watch this. People are watching this. We need to keep it classy, guys, because we don't want people laughing at us.
They got rent.
Well, they was a concern that were brought up. I am concerned about. And there's nothing meant towards Mr. Sheffield. But the irrigation system is walking across that road. And that road is open. And we know it.
That's right. It's a liability to the county.
We're gonna get sued before.
And the attorney called y'all that night up under middle county courthouse on the lake.
I wasn't there when the attorney come. I wasn't no county commissioner that time.
That irrigation system does not need to be across the road to be to get this thing was on.
Well, the cross fitting to be out the field. So they've been do, they've been doing their own thing for I don't know how long. So it's gonna be put up for a vote one way or another.
Lathan, Paul, that man in there with uh, Mr. Thornton, he knows the situation. I know it'll make my life real inconvenient if y'all close that road. I do know that.
Alright, is there anything else we need to go over with this? Any more facts need laying out here on the table about the road? Any 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 more information?
We just need to make sure that we will within the.
We're gonna talk to county attorney.
Law. Ever done.
We're gonna talk to county attorney before we take over. It'll be it'll be voted on next month to to do it or not. So if ain't no more facts, we're gonna move on. Any more information need passing on or bringing out?
Well, I'm just trying to, underhanded, not even tell me about the story.
What you talking about?
I didn't know nothing about it.
About what? It's on the agenda, Earl. The 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 agenda's on Facebook, it's posted, it's.
Yeah, it's on, it's on here.
And this right here, this is for this is what reason for the meeting. We ain't voting tonight.
I know, yeah.
Ain't nobody done nothing underhanded or wrong. Why is that? I don't wanna hear no more sarcasm, Earl.
I don't care what you wanna hear. I'm telling the facts.
Well, don't get out of order. Don't get out of order. Because if you do, I'm gonna ask the sheriff to escort you out of here.
Oh, you blow that in the wild here.
Well, that's enough about the road, Dan. We're gonna move on. Alright, next thing we got is the old business. We got Angela Hagan for the animal shelter, the tax abatement.
Last night, you'd ask for a letter from the accountant, um, the animal rescue.
Yes.
That, they couldn't quite give, they couldn't say that they could only, they're not even the ones that write the checks. Um, A.R.A. is, they're the bookkeepers. But I did bring this. I think that may help. It's the lease. And it shows it's a dollar a month.
Okay. Well, look here. The taxes on that thing would be twenty-six hundred dollars a year. There was a a contract brought over here to, you know, for the county to provide, I guess, payment for taking care of animals. Do you know, you know anything about the contract?
No, I don't. I don't. I'm just the land owner and the building owner and the.
Well, and I mean it. We're gonna we're gonna run it by the board, but anyway, the contract.
That would make, that would take more, that would be more important than my request.
Well, we we.
If you're wondering if you have to do one or the other, theirs would be more important. What, is that funny?
Well, I mean, we, it 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 kinda ain't.
I think where he was going was, if we don't give the tax abatement, we we don't wanna pay.
Yeah, we we gotta give the tax abatement. We don't need to be go entering into a contract for to provide care for the animals also. Another thing, what, in that in that situation like that, and I ain't seen the contract, but um, the uh, how would, how would we document where the animals are coming from? Were they all coming from this county or?
That is handled with this company, A.R.A. Carol Williams. She'd be the one that would have all the answers to that. And I could forward her her number. But like I say, I I didn't realize there was a request in from them or something in the works. I don't want, this, this should have nothing to do with that.
We all, I think we all willing to work with you, but we kind of need to get the whole package together.
I got you. I got you.
I mean, the tax abatement, and then we got the contract to enter into if if we decide to. But we need some documentation. I mean, if we need to contact these people, or they contact us before we do anything. Because we got no way to document with all the dogs or cats or whatever are coming from Seminole County or or where they're coming from.
I do know that I was there yesterday and there was a mama dog that was just skin and bones and her puppies. And I asked where they came from and they said, no account.
How do how do they document that?
I don't know. There's gotta be some documentation, I promise you that.
If the people's, if if we get some documentation with the driver's license or something to that effect, saying these dogs, with the people's address and all that right there on there. So we know that the animals came from here. That that'd give everybody a little bit more comfort to know that we.
So we talking about if the sheriff dropped it off?
Well, yeah, that would be, I I would think that would be necessary.
That'd be the only way we'd pay is if the sheriff dropped it off?
I'm hard to hear.
I'm hard to understand, so. Is that right, Nick? Am I reading that right? So if they want us to pay if y'all, if you're.
Yeah, you go with the dog catching crew.
If 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 we got an animal in the contract, I think, if we got an animal, you know, we can, we could, I think, be a hundred dollars. Because I know that's probably not in your part of, it'll be a hundred dollars for animals. And I think in the contract, the way it is, it's awful. We don't want to take, take animals just from anybody, is is the way I understand it.
This right least here.
Okay, yeah, that 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 we we.
I'd like to make sure I read it right.
We would take them and and uh, if if we took one down there, you know, like, uh, then they they would charge a hundred dollars and twenty-five dollars a day, I think, for three days.
I think it's fifty dollars and twenty-five, I think, or something like that. Am I reading it right?
But at my understanding, when, that they wouldn't, uh, just private citizens couldn't take an animal down there, you know?
Right, right.
At the time, it'd just be, when if we got a call to one, like we had one the other, we had one the other day out at, I think, Rent's Apartments out there. It was a dog and of course, he was laying there with a chain on. We got a, and we we made animal cruelty charge against the owner of the animal. It died then the next day. And but that was before the place opened. So we didn't, you know, we, there was nothing we could do with animal. We didn't take it nowhere.
Right.
And I don't know, to my knowledge, we hadn't took any down there, you know, at this point, but uh, it was just a.
Okay. But if this is just involving y'all or, and I ain't read this thing in detail. Y'all are the uh, like the vet down there. He's, I don't know whether you know or not, he he would, him and his uh coworker down there was designated as the, if there was a, an aggressive dog, is to determine whether or not they were, he's the one that determines that, his staff.
And and I, my understanding, Dr. Henley is gonna, was gonna go down there one day a week and spade and neuter and operate at no charge. You know, he was gonna donate his time one day a week at the facility down there.
That's my understanding.
That that was my understanding from from uh, from what the people that brought the contracts here.
Yeah, and I talked to Dr. Henley about it too, and he confirmed it.
Alright. Do y'all want to uh, give this some more thought? Alright, what what about, do we need to contact the folks? Because I I don't wanna get wrapped up in something here that. So.
Who do we need to talk to?
Carol Williams.
Carol Williams. You got that name? You got that con, do we have that contact information?
I'll get it for you.
You got it, though?
As far as tax, you know.
You can be taking like a hundred dollars down there a week, but nothing like that, already. Start taking like a hundred dollars a week down there, nothing like that, right?
No, 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 no. Miss Face said she would take about everything we would take, so she she loves.
So.
And then I think they would adopt them out and, you know, in charge.
Yeah, if it takes a year or whatever that takes, the rest is on them.
Uh, we, we'll act on the contract next month. Um, do y'all wanna make any decision about the tax abatement or not?
I think we'll wait until.
I think we should table it.
Yeah, what'd you say, put it all together?
Can I give you her number just perfectly?
Give it, give it, give it, give it to that man over there. That's my representative. Does this.
Eyes aren't as good as they used to be.
Do we need to get her to come and talk to us too? Where she live at?
That would definitely be good. I'll mention to her and, but she lives um, in the county.
In Miller County or Seminole?
Um, Miller, I think. Right on the line, though, it's Iron City. No, that that's Seminole, isn't it? It's above Iron City, though. No, that, that's Seminole, isn't it, it's above Iron City, though.
Okay. Uh, we, we'll make contact with her, but I think, we'll try to work something out here, y'all, that some kind of way may, may not be exactly.
I didn't mean to confuse you.
Nah, it's alright, it ain't no big deal, we, we just, I think everybody willing, they, they wanna try to do something, but, uh, we, we'll try to get it all together.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all got any more questions about anything?
No.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next thing on the old business, is the fueling station report. Got any questions on that? Okay, alright, Layden brought up here, what I talked about a while ago, and we put it under their old business, cause we done talked about it, was the bill for the pipe repair. Where the motor grader drove the pipe up out of the ground, where it's irrigation pipe, and it was Israel Houston. He come up with a bill of eighteen hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-two, and ninety cents, and he's got it on his phone, and he's telling, telling me a while ago that about half of that was labor. But he's got it buried like it ought to be buried, some brand new pipe, do y'all wanna pay for part of it, all of it, or how you wanna handle it? Ha- half of it's labor and half of it's material. And it ru- it wasn't really marked like it ought to be, but I think you need to do a little something for them.
And it was growed up around it in bushes and everything else.
Do you think it's fair to pay for the labor? I don't.
Were we responsible for cutting around it?
No. It wasn't, it wasn't marked real well, but I mean, the man wrote the bill, see if we'd do something.
It is something we need to do too, Craig, probably run another ad and tell people we need to update that, cause, you know, that sign was faded to the point where you about couldn't tell what it was, I mean. And we put those signs up about fifteen years ago, so they probably getting to be a lot more of them, it wouldn't hurt to try to get everybody to maybe update some of the stuff and remind them that they need to keep them marked.
So it, it was marked then?
He said it wasn't marked.
It was kinda well off the road, and the sign had, you know, faded, and it's supposed to be marked on both sides of the road, but it, it, at one time, it had been marked, but the sign was probably six, seven feet off the road, and it was faded real bad. We worked on that at night, it, you know, Ms. Christine knew we had a problem there, and we worked on it at night. And we was just trying to get the water to run down one side, and the pipe wasn't about that deep. I mean, and we really wasn't ditching, we was just trying to get a little low side to the road, and we did catch a pipe, and there was an old sign on one side. That is something he does, they.
Newberry Chambers, Newberry Chambers.
This is Newberry Chambers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about the wrong.
They got it grewled up around that site real bad out there, hopefully.
Oh, but Newberry Chambers wasn't marked at all, there wasn't a sign there on Newberry Chambers whatsoever.
So then we should, cause that falls on, on us.
Alright, I'm just gonna call for a motion, if y'all wanna repair the pipe, to, i- if part of it, partial, or none of it, if, or, or just. I mean.
Then we should be responsible for at least half of it, if, if it wasn't marked, or anything that falls on us.
Do you wanna pay for any of it?
Yes.
Yeah, half of it.
You gonna put that on the motion?
I'm okay.
I'll second.
Alright. All in favor?
I'm against it.
So we got, we got three votes to pay the labor on the repair, that's, that's about half of it. Alright, so motion carried, so we're gonna pay half of that right there for the labor. Any more discussion on that? Alright, the new business is the comprehensive plan resolution, and that's page twenty-four and twenty-five, we got to sign off on this. Tonight, Doug.
Yes, that's just a resolution saying we can go ahead and submit that plan to Department of Community Affairs, actually, uh, Regional Commission.
Is this, is this just redoing it for another three years?
Well, he came, he came over here and he sat down, me and Doug and Cory and all that, and we went through all this, that whole list of stuff. And, I mean, it's something we got to redo, to, I mean, to, you got to have this in place to be able to, to get.
That money?
Well, any, any kind of cooperation out of them, yeah. So we need a motion to give me permission to sign this, this resolution to adopt a comprehensive plan. A second.
I second.
All in favor? I'm not much in case. The five-three-one-one resolution is Southwest Georgia Regional Commission, that's page twenty-six through thirty, that's the, uh. Is that the, um?
That's the resolution to get the federal funds for the transit.
The tran- yeah. So this is the thing, it's the same thing that we've been doing in the past, to keep the buses rolling. That same thing.
Well, I believe so.
And that's the transit buses.
Yeah.
Y'all, everybody familiar with that? I need a motion to give me permission to sign this resolution to keep that.
So moved.
A second.
I second.
All in favor? Alright, motion carried. The, uh, reauthorization of the Southwest Georgia Joint Development Authority, Jamie, do you wanna speak to us?
Um, yes, sir, I wanted to just to be available to answer any questions, I know there's nine pages there that lay out the new proposed constitution and vales, as well as the articles of incorporation. This was an active group, um, it was a collaborative effort between Early, Seminole, and Miller Counties, um, probably about twenty years ago. Um, and sometimes things just fade away, and this is one of those elements that just faded away, likely due to, um, someone just not keeping the ball rolling. But the State Department of Economic Development, they reached out to, um, a group of us in Miller, Early, and Seminole County, had us skate together. Explain the benefits, it's a fairly simple process, it's just the state authorizing the acknowledgement of this joint development authority. It would allow some incentives for employers, um, and new investors in that tri-county region, um, with some job creation tax credits. And there's also elements like, um, the initial rehabilitation of the state theater in downtown Cockwood, that grant was submitted through the joint development committee. So it opened, having the joint development committee opens up some opportunities and funding sources through the state. It's fairly simple, Early has already, uh, passed their resolution, it's the same resolution y'all have, with Miller plugged in. Um, Dawsonville or Seminole County has also done that, um, and I spoke with Mr. Kevin Calhoun, who's the chair of the Miller County Economic Development Authority. And he and I would be willing to serve in the two Miller County positions, and it's likely that we would only meet, um, once a quarter, and talk about opportunities with the state.
Does he need appointing by us, or he just volunteer to be on there to sign?
Um, we did have a conversation, yes, sir, um, he is willing to serve alongside me.
That's, that's, we don't need to appoint him, he can just volunteer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if I don't know the answer to any of your questions, I will find out from Miss Tina Herring of the state, um, development office.
Did y'all wanna go over anything with this, got any question on it? What, uh, you were talking about, I mean, what, what, uh, job wise, I mean, what, what would this do? As far as numbers or anything to boost that? You got any idea?
To improve the status, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Did you, as far as creating a job, you got any idea about numbers or anything?
Um, so.
Might help with?
Um, I don't have any specific metrics, no, sir, um, but I do know that there are jo- joint development authorities set up across the state. And it helps incentivize investors, now, Miller County, it's not necessarily poised for heavy industry. Um, but in some of the areas that have joint development authorities, heavy industry has been recruited through the joint development authority because there are funding opportunities when the state recognizes that there's collaborative effort between counties. But as far as any specifics, if you.
Kind of a vehicle to maybe get some grant money?
It is, it's like the comprehensive plan y'all just talked about, you gotta have that box checked off when you apply for certain funding sources. Um, and it's an arduous process, the comprehensive plan, this is fairly simple, this is just saying and acknowledging that there's two people from each of the three counties. They get together, they meet, there's, um, uh, notes count, those maintained, um, we regularly check in with our elected bodies, both the city and the county, just to acknowledge that there is conversation happening about recruitment of new employment opportunities, new businesses, no matter if they're small businesses or large scale businesses. It's fairly simple, um, but it has to come to y'all as the county for the resolution, and then what happens once Miss Herring has, um, Miller County's resolution, she's gonna pair it with the Seminole and the Early resolutions, send them to the state, and they will authorize that, it basically is an acknowledgement that there is a Southwest Georgia Joint Development Authority again.
Uh, what? Did it just, when it was falling back in the early two thousands, I mean, what, did it just, just kinda fall through the cracks, or what was, why didn't it go on?
Um, I think just evolution of the people that were serving, and maybe someone just didn't keep calling the meetings, I'm not really sure, cause it, it predates me. Um, I will say, though, that it, it appears that originally the, um, Chamber of Commerce for Cockwood, Miller Counties, um, held the bank account, there's about thirteen hundred dollars in a longstanding bank account that has remained untouched since the, the joint authority was dissolved, not necessarily dissolved, just unauthorized anywhere. I think people change roles, and they, like I said, no one just picked up the ball and ran with it in any of the three counties, there's a lot of changeover, um, especially in Early County right now, with a new county manager, or city manager, um, and the lady in Seminole County, um, she's not been in her position very long, so what I do know about the joint development authority is just from dusting off some old records at the chamber office, after Miss Tina Herring contacted.
Y'all, y'all plan to meet and elect officers, and first one thing, or is that, some of that already been done?
There has not, we were waiting for the county governments to, um, approve the resolution that just acknowledges the formation.
Have they got all their members appointed already?
Yes, sir, there are two other counties now.
What, what do we need to do with this to give you to go ahead?
I just need Mr. Offey to stamp y'all's signatures on that resolution, if that's how that happens, um, and then if y'all sign and date it, I'll get a copy from him and submit it to the state to show that Miller County will participate in the Southwest Georgia Joint Development Authority.
Uh, we need a motion to go forward with this.
I'll make it.
Say. All in favor?
Alright.
Thank y'all, we'll keep you updated.
Alright, appreciate it. The, uh, next thing we got, Mr. Robin, you wanna talk to us about a couple of things?
Sure, um, his, the, uh, fueling station, the hospital would like to participate in, um, in, um, purchasing of, um, of fuel for our vehicles only. Um, there's a contract that I've got, but we failed to get it up to Doug for this meeting today. Um, but we understand that it would be, I believe it's ten percent of the cost of the fuel. Um, it would just be hospital or our vehicles. Now, the second item, um, is the, um, is the rental of the senior center. Um, as you guys probably will recall about a year and a half ago, the hospital authority entered into a rental agreement for the, um, for the senior center on Delores Street, the corner there. Um, I have a, an extension of that rental agreement with me. That agreement actually lapsed, and we have continued to pay the, the rent for the building, it's roughly third, a little bit more than thirty-one thousand dollars a year. But the hospital would like to actually acquire that building, formally. Um, not right now, although that's great, I mean, we certainly can, um, but I would like for us to acquire it from the county for the purpose of expanding our elder care services. Um, that's what the hospital is all about, um, the population is aging. Um, there is a program that I'd like to put in there that would help our aging population, um, it would help our underinsured individuals. Um, it's a Medicaid program, so people who don't have the resources sometimes, um, to pay for some of the medical care, um, Medicaid would cover this, and it is basically, ultimately, the program that I wanna put in there is an adult day care program.
Okay.
That program is basically designed to avoid long-term care, um, placement. So during the day, the hospital and our staff would care for individuals who are otherwise, um, at that level of care, where they need supervision, they need some medical care, um, but they're not yet ready, they don't wanna be, um, committed into a long-term care facility. This would provide, um, daytime, it's just like childcare, except for it's, it's adults. Um, so I'd like to, um, like the county to, um, consider selling that building to us.
Alright. The, uh, it had been mentioned about opening it up to the public, to the seniors, for like one day a week, is that, is that something that maybe?
You did ask me specifically about that last week, and that is a possibility, to do one day a week, um, for the community. But the whole program is mainly about the community.
Right.
And you would help them, get them, get them signed up if they came, like, is that?
Sign up into what?
Into this program, like, community people?
Yes. I mean, today, we're providing an aid and link services already for community people, um, you know, who need, who fall between the gaps, need Medicare, Medicaid, don't know how to apply for it, so we do that already. Um, this is a, a group of people, for example, if, if my mother was alive and I'm working like I'm working today, she would need some kind of oversight. I live with my aunt, who really does, um, and so this would provide a ten to twelve hour period where an elderly person, or it could be somebody who's even mentally challenged in some way with a behavioral problem, but it would give people, and, and, you know, in, in that kind of category, the opportunity to be basically supervised during the day, entertained during the day, their mind kept active during the day. There would be some medical care that is available in the facility for them, and I can continue to work as a CEO, as opposed to leaving my job because of a, a family member. I'll also tell you that the government is really pushing this. So, it, the, these things are cropping up all over.
Alright, y'all got any, did she tell you what you needed to know, or you got any more questions on that right there?
Well, my suggestion is maybe we need to get some of the senior citizens to put a bar in that plate down there, get their input on this thing, they could.
Robin, you wanna, you want to, how soon you need to know about this?
Well, I would prefer to know sooner rather than later.
Like, what, what, for next meeting month, be okay, or we need to?
Um, if you guys can't make a decision today, then we can postpone it for another month.
Um.
But I, but there are, you know, there's a lot of work that I have to do, and my intention would be to get this thing up and running by next summer. And, um, and there's not a lot of time there for me to do that. Right now, we're already, we're about to hit November, and you might as well figure, the state and federal government, November, December is dead. And then I've gotta go after licenses and certificates of need and things of that nature, so I'm already kind of looking at it.
I should get an agreement here, and, uh, we need to renew the agreement. Uh, cause this actually done lapsed. 'cause it's actually done lapsed. If you want the, if you want the money to keep coming in for her renting the building. Have you got a, you got a copy of the agreement? Y'all got one?
Yeah.
Alright. And there's a, there's a lease purchase option in this.
Well, I personally think we need to get the senior involved in this thing, get her input on it before we do anything.
Alright, what's the rest of y'all's freedom on?
I'll say we go ahead and lease it. Can't do that?
We need to continue the rental agreement on things. Y'all want the money to keep coming in 'cause we, tentatively, we can verbally agree to that right there and then act on this. If y'all wanna postpone it. We need to verbally agree to let her lease this thing.
How long is it for this guy? Is it for another year? Is that what it is? Month, huh?
You read it in section two, now he's got.
Yeah, month to month. Month to month, okay?
It says after completion of the initial one year, this to lease it for one, one more year if I'm reading it right. It automatically renew on a month-to-month basis unless terminated. Is that right?
Yes.
Y'all wanna verbally agree to that?
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion to do that right there and then we can, we can just take this back up next month? About the, the signing off on this actual whole agreement here? Is that, is that doable?
Well, I, I respectfully ask, so how do we communicate with the seniors? What is the forum for doing that?
What, how, how did you wanna go about, if, if this went into effect tonight? How, how would you go about doing, doing that? Do we need to communicate with them or, or, or do you want to?
Well, I wasn't going to. It wasn't my suggestion to communicate with them.
Alright, Ellen, what, what you wanna do?
I'm first communicate with the seniors, find out what they got on the mind about this thing because they will basically tell within a year that we would take a look at it and maybe funding available even before that year was up.
But there's, there's not any funding, is there?
I don't know. It may, it may have any funding themselves or anything. I just think you need to.
How you wanna communicate with them? I think is where we're headed. How, how do you, how do you propose we communicate with them?
Awesome. But I know they got a pretty good uproar before on about this thing and I don't want them to be left out and then have no say-so body period.
Well, it's shut down 'cause of COVID. The funding went away for the director. And there's no funding for that. The meal vouchers, that program's still going on. They, they get the meal just like they been getting them. But there's not, from, from me talking to the woman, her name's Izzy, can't think of her last name, there's no fund, that director part ain't coming back. They're not gonna fund that. And there's not any of these other counties around here. They, some of these buildings, most all of them have been reassigned. And the one over there in Baker County, they rent it out like a community center.
Well, I said, I'm not saying what she's talking about is not a good idea. I'm not saying that. I just don't want the seniors to be left feeling like they left out of this thing again and then 'cause when we done it the first time, we should have consulted with somebody.
It was shut down, Ellen. I mean, it was gonna be sitting there vacant. It wasn't gonna open back up, doors wasn't gonna open back up. That was a way to get thirty-something thousand dollars a year. She approached us about wanting to, because Dion had nowhere to go. Now you got physical therapy to stay in the county. And when they get the, the building completed over yonder, that's gonna make a transition over there. And she's talking about, won't start this senior program up. And that may be putting something down, down that it may not ever be 'cause, uh, I mean, unless they somewhere to get some funding, it can't open back up the way it was.
Well, I said, that's, that's my take on it. I just think that they should be involved in it, find out what the people thought.
So if I can just say one more thing, okay, so, um, by April of next year, I will have completed the construction of that new medical office building. When I'm done with that, I will vacate the senior building.
So.
Unless I know that I have that ability to buy it, I will move on real quickly. And if that answer is no real soon, then I will start to look at construction. Now, because April is around the corner for me.
Right. So, maybe if we have a meeting next week, um, not earlier in the week, after that right there, I ain't, I ain't gonna be at no meeting unless it rains. Uh.
So there's a potential that this, 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 what Ms. Robin's talking about could actually be helping some of the seniors that were in that program before. I mean, is there a possibility of that?
That's exactly what, so, I mean, and it's gonna be giving them something to do. This is not a new conversation. A year and a half ago, I had this conversation. And so, um, so we could, those people who are already displaced, they could have, had I opened up a center, they could have already been involved and engaged. Many of the same people.
So it's going.
Whoever they are, if they're the same people that I know that the hospital used to go in and provide them with some education, some counseling, things of that nature, if they are the same seniors, then many of them would take advantage of adult debt.
Okay, so, to sum it all up, if, if, if we don't let her know something pretty quick, she's gonna make plans to, to do her own building somewhere else and then that the deal's gonna be off, the rent's gonna go away. And you got the opportunity to make a sale on the building. So you need to consider that too.
The opposite of all of it.
Alright, well, you got thirty thousand dollars a year that you're gonna have to come up with, that we've been getting, just, just been going into the general fund as revenue. So, and we ain't got no money to be paying to hire no director. You can't just open the door down yonder and, and say, here it is. Somebody's, somebody's got to be an authority down there.
Well, I'm just saying, personally, I would like to hear what they got to say about the situation. Y'all do whatever you wanna do, you know, but I'm just saying that's the way I feel about the seniors.
Alright, Monday or Tuesday next week? Y'all wanna have a meeting with them?
Yes.
Well, it needs to be publicized that, that, that's, we'll have like a public key and whatever you wanna call it. It won't be a vote meeting. It'll just be that. Is that agreeable?
That's fine.
Alright, what, what's, what's y'all's schedule? Alright, which day you wanna have it? 'Cause I don't need to do it in a past, nothing past Tuesday. It's six. Which day?
Monday.
Earlier than that?
Monday.
We need to do it at six. Or Monday?
Monday.
What about you, lady? Alright. Is there any more discussion about that? Ms. Robin, you got anything else you wanna add to that or y'all got any questions for about any of this? Alright, we, we gonna, before we do anything, we gonna verbally agree. Need a motion to continue with this lease agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Alright. And this, this right here will be finalized, yes or no? You want it, would it be alright at the next meeting or we need to do?
You know, the next meeting is fine. I, I won't be here next week.
I mean, we just, this, the other meeting with seniors is just a public hearing thing. When we get to.
But I won't be there if you, if you need me to be.
Alright. We'll vote on this at the next regular county commissioners meeting. Is that okay?
That would be fine.
Alright. Is there anything else we need to go over? If not, anything with the department heads? Doug, you got anything else? Alright, if not, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, we adjourn.